Good evening. This is Mayor Stephen B. Grant. A called order of the City of Boynton Beach Commission's meeting today, Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, at 5:31 PM. John, would you please provide us with the introduction?
Hello and welcome. My name is John McNally, and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and the elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their questions into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the raise hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you. And so we have an invocation by Pastor Dwayne Roberts of Cavalry Chapel. Can you unmute your microphone? Are you there with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can anyone, everyone hear me clearly?
Yes, we can. Yes.
All right. It is an honor and privilege to do the invocation, so let's start. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to engage in very important, in this very important agenda. We ask, Lord, for your wisdom over our elected officials, our city managers, our county commissioners, our first responders, and our community at large. Lord, as we look at also a pandemic, we pray for safety and health over many things that make Boynton beautiful. So I pray throughout this time that there will be many things that we are able to resolve together, and there would just be an amazing sense of unity as we continue to push forward during this time. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant?
Present.
Vice Mayor Ty Pennsirga?
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz is absent. Commissioner Woodrow Hay?
Yeah.
Commissioner Christina Romulus?
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Addition, solutions, and corrections to the agenda. I'd like to add and then announce a proclamation for breast cancer awareness as item 3F. And also, I received a request to move up the city manager's 9B item, Charlotte Pelton and Associates, up in the meeting to announcements if they are here. If they are not, we will hear them during the city manager's report.
She is here, Mayor.
All right. Excellent. So may I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sing no further discussion. All those in favor, states up by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Hay, would you like to begin? Any informational items?
I do not have any disclosures or information items at this time.
All right. Next, we have Commissioner Romulus.
I have no disclosures, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Pennsirga?
No disclosures at this time. Thank you.
All right. For myself, on October 13th, I attended the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Change Compact. On the 14th, I attended the policing forum at the Arts Garage, where our police chief and Delray Beach's chief had a very poignant discussion about policing in our neighborhoods. On the 15th, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency's meeting and also had a discussion with Ocean Hudson. On the 16th, I was back at the Arts Garage for remembrance of Corey Jones and attended the playground ribbon cutting. So once it stops raining, we invite everybody to our new downtown playground. On the 17th, I was at Betty Thomas Park with Community Greening, planting a, planting, I think, 45 trees all along that walkway to help create a shaded path. On the 18th, I went to the Nichols Boulevard Force around Harlow Avenue to take a look at it. And also, I want to make sure that everyone knows about Read for the Record on October 29th. And hopefully, we're doing something for that in the city of Boynton Beach.
Yes, Mayor, we're working on that feverishly with all of our schools. We've got-
Okay. And I think that is it for the informational items. There's nothing else. We will move on to announcements. Our first announcement is proclaim November 1st, 2020 is Extra Mile Day. Eleanor Chrisel, Home Communications Marketing Director, will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas, the city of Boynton Beach is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas, Boynton Beach is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas, Boynton Beach is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas, Boynton Beach acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2020. Whereas, in the city of Boynton Beach, our Public Communication Marketing Director, Eleanor Chrisel, has gone the extra mile this year in forming and educating our residents, businesses, and visitors how to live, work, and play safely during the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim November 1st, 2020 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge individuals in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, communities, country, or world a better place. Eleanor, would you like to say a few words?
Okay, I'm trying to get unmuted.
You're unmuted.
I'm unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Grant, Commissioners. This was a surprise, and I tried to talk the mayor out of not doing this because I don't take recognition well. But I want to accept the proclamation, Mayor Grant, on behalf of the team members that I have, Laura Landsberg and Chelsea Sapanian, as well as all the employees in the city that have worked so hard and continue to work each and every day to keep our city informed and safe during COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next announcement is to honor the memory of Assistant City Manager Tim Howard, who passed away on October 14th, 2019. The Tim Howard Excellence in Public Service Award has been created to recognize employees who exemplify comparable characteristics, including adherence to the highest ethical standards and work integrity. This award is dedicated in Mr. Howard's memory, acknowledging his contribution to not only the city of Boynton Beach, but to the field of local government and public service. Lori, do you have any words?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. October 14th marked the one-year anniversary of Tim's passing. And I have to thank the mayor for coming up with this idea. Actually, we were talking one day about, you know, what are we going to do to honor Tim, especially with his role in our town square project? If it wasn't for him, we wouldn't, it wouldn't have happened. So the mayor had suggested, he says, why don't we do a special public service award and acknowledge his excellence? And we went to work on it. We took the idea and ran, and I'm very proud to unveil this this coming Friday, October 23rd, in our incubator space at City Hall at 4:00 PM. We will have a beautiful, a large perpetual plaque. And this program is designed to acknowledge an employee once a year that is nominated that will meet very, very high standards of excellence and ethics and integrity. And they will go through a pretty rigorous vetting process for us to name that individual, and that their name will go on this plaque. Our first year, we are awarding it to Tim posthumously. So it'll give us an opportunity then to finalize the criteria and the standards. We're pretty much there, and then we're going to roll it out to our employees probably at the end of this year or after the new year. But join us on October 23rd, this Friday at 4:00 PM to celebrate all of the contribution that Tim made to our city and our organization and to all of us as good friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next announcement is early voting for November 3rd, 2020. General election is from Monday, October 19th, 2020 through Sunday, November 1st, 2020. The early voting hours are from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM daily at the Hester Community Center located at 1901 North Seacrest Boulevard. The city is working in partnership with Mayvols Center to provide free transportation for residents to the Hester Center. A listing of early voting locations throughout Palm Beach County is available at the following website, And Lori, what is the phone number again? It is-
Eleanor, do you have that handy?
I see it right here. It's 561-395-8920, extension 231.
And please help us get the word out. We, this is a free ride to and from, round trip. We would, we're there to help anybody get to the Hester Center that's a Boynton Beach resident should they need some transportation. All two weeks of early voting.
Is there a flyer that was shared? Did I miss that?
Pardon me?
Is there a flyer that was shared?
We've actually just asked you to share it all on your social media. We have it on our electronic billboards, our, all of our social media. Eleanor can pipe in on the rest. I don't think we did like an actual flyer. But it's on the electronic billboard on 95. We've done several Facebook posts. Casey did a video on it. I've reached out to the clergy and our senior center members. So we're really trying, but anything anybody can do to just share our page on Facebook and get it out to your followers would be, would be huge.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question for staff. I know we just launched our city app. Is push notifications a feature that we can do? In other words, can we use the app to push notify about the service?
I think it's on there, Vice Mayor. I know it's on there. Laura added it. I don't know if it's in the form of push notification. I'd have to ask Eleanor to chime in on that, but I know it's-
Sure to have. Even for boil water notices, you want to be able to push that out?
Yeah.
It shows up and-
I'm almost positive, yes, we do, but-
All right. Well, thank you.
I need staff to confirm that.
All right. And I've been requested to, yes, Commissioner Hay?
Are we, Lori, are we extending this beyond early voting time here at like November 3rd? The actual day, just, just the early, early vote?
Yes, sir. And originally, I was thinking November 3rd, but we have like 26 polling locations in our city, so that could become a logistics nightmare. So staff was a lot wiser than I was when we first talked about this and said, why don't we do the early voting site, one place to go? Two solid weeks will get anybody there. So I think that's probably where we'll, we'll just focus on the early voting.
All right.
And Vice Mayor Ty, Ride to the Polls is an app, is a link right on the app when you open it up with all the information? I don't know if that means it's push or not.
Oh, that's all right. I just wanted to know. It's also good for future things, right?
Yes.
And that phone number again is 561-395-8920, extension 231. I actually voted earlier today before the meeting. It's very quick and easy. I encourage all of our residents to early vote if they haven't done so by mail already.
Lori, I do want to just respond, if I can, to Commissioner Ty's question. It is on our app, it is pushed out next door, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, multiple channels of those, including recreation as well. Billboards, electronics, signs, our email newsletter, another email newsletter will be going out tomorrow. So we're asking everybody to go to those sites and share it with your friends as well. That will help us get the word out as well, too. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mayor, one last thing on that. We do have, the Supervisor of Elections also has a mail-in ballot mobile van there. So you could take your mail-in ballot and physically take it to the van. They have two employees that are manning that unit all day while the polls are open through the two weeks of early voting. So that's available as well.
All right.
Lori, did you want to mention that the food drive then will not be there for the next two weeks? I'm sorry, but I don't see it on the agenda, the food drive.
Feeding South Florida will not be at Hester for the next two Thursdays. However, this Saturday, the 24th, is a large distribution at the mall. So people can go out. It will resume at Hester after the early voting ends.
All right. Excellent. Our next announcement is from the Solid Waste Division that we will be having a tire amnesty week for city residents the week of November 2nd to the 6th, 2020.
Davison will present that, Mayor.
All right.
So John, unmute Davison Monastim?
Okay.
We got, we hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Davison Monastim, Solid Waste Manager. We are happy to announce that we will be having our semi-annual Tire Amnesty Week starting November 2nd through the 6th. Residents can place up to eight car tires at the curb side with or without the rims. They must be placed away from cars, parked cars, I'd say, garbage carts, low-hanging wires, or any obstacles that may prevent the drivers from servicing them safely. If anyone misses the Tire Amnesty Week, they can call the Solid Waste Division at 742-6200. We will be more than happy to assist them. And I would like to announce also for the last Tire Amnesty Week, we have collected 3.6 tons of tires. That is great news, potentially tires that would be curbside. I'd say vacant lots with standing water and all that good stuff. So we got those tires off the streets. So thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Our next presentation is by myself regarding the enhancements for the Wilbright I-95 interchange improvement project. We have that presentation pulled up. Um, let's see. Okay, can you zoom in for one slide at a time? Perfect. So at this interchange, as you can see, the FDOT, we are requesting to have these rectangular rapid flashing beacons on the different crosswalks so that drivers know that they need to stop for both pedestrians and bicyclists that are on the sidewalk. Next slide. So the current, there is a proposed widening of Wilbright Road at the Southwest 8th Street interchange, in which they are going to add a second left turn lane to head north and south on Southwest 8th Street. In order to do this, and so they've stated that they would propose of having a five-foot bike lane on a 40 mile per hour road. I suggested that that doesn't make much sense because there is a high likelihood of someone being seriously hurt on that road. And that instead, we move the bicyclist path onto the sidewalk and create a protected place for bicyclists. And we are also looking into getting signs so that bicyclists know that they have to yield to pedestrians and that pedestrians have the right of way on the sidewalk. Next slide. As you can see from the slides from 2013 to 2017 to today, FDOT is looking to expand the overpass on Wilbright Road, taking out additional mature landscaping on the different green space there. And so with this, we recommend it as a board that any, that the required funding under Florida statute be spent on this interchange. You know, part of the issues that we have here in Boynton Beach is that because we are not necessarily a high-traffic area for internationally or for national travel, the state is trying to promote excess landscaping on high areas such as West Palm Beach, Boca Raton, Jupiter, Stewart. Because we are in District 4 of the FDOT's district, that goes from basically Fort Lauderdale to Fort Pierce. And they can spend the money on the project anywhere in that area. And so we, as part of my position and representation of Boynton Beach, we've made it so that the over $100,000 of landscaping required from this project be put at that interchange. Next slide. And so here is the new language in our resolution for the I-95 that we include continuous shared-use paths in both directions on Wilbright Road within project limits. Install pedestrian-actuated warning beacons or rectangular rapid-flash beacons and marked crosswalks on all unsignalized on-ramps and off-ramps within the project limits. And restore landscaping within the interchange limits. And so this is part of the greater issue of our mobility plan here in the city of Boynton Beach, that we want to make sure that it is safe for anyone, not just people in cars, to get around the city. And so I'm looking forward to having those future discussions about making our tillia roads have a shared-use path because I don't feel even a buffered bike lane is something we should have on a 45 mile per hour road. So I'll open it up to any questions if anybody has any from the commission. I'll speak to-
Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Could you just educate me a little bit further, further in the process here? So these are proposals. Has this already been presented? And have you, are you getting pushback? You're getting support?
So-
A response like?
So the, the city has been working with FDOT regarding this project. And so part of being on the county's Metropolitan Planning Organization called the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, we as a 21 elected leaderboard, including five members from the county commission, members from the different municipalities and the port, discuss how to spend gas tax dollars on the federal and state level locally. And so part of our discussion is that we have members from the city that are on the Citizen Advisory Committee or the TPA that makes recommendations. And one of our members is also on the bicyclist, bicyclists and pedestrian tactical advisory committee. And they stated that they were against it, the shared-use path, because someone on a bike might run into somebody who is hard of seeing. And I, you know, I said, that's, and I understand that risk. And so it's something that we need to educate our public about shared-use paths that bicyclists have to yield because this is a way that, Wilbright Road is, is in between the two leisure villas. And I think we want to start encouraging more people to ride their bikes. And with that, we need to also educate them how to prevent accidents. So the resolution passed 21 to 0, or I think 19 to 0 unanimously. And, you know, the FDOT and the city will be working on this project in the future.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. As if there's no other questions, we'll move on to Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas, October 2020 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to education and increasing public awareness about the importance of early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas, 1 in 8 American women are affected by breast cancer, and a man's lifetime risk of breast cancer is about 1 in 883. And whereas, when breast cancer is detected early and is in the localized stage, the five-year relative survival rate is 100%. And whereas, this month, as we honor those who we lost to breast cancer, let us join with the loved ones who celebrate their memory and the patients who battle this disease every day, as well as our nation's advocates, medical researchers, healthcare providers, renew our commitment to better prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer. And whereas, the American Cancer Society recognizes that although great strides have been made in breast cancer awareness and treatment, there remains much more to be accomplished. And whereas, during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we recognize all those who know the anguish of breast cancer and extend our health, health concern for all who share the pain and difficulties of this disease. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I think we will move on to Charlotte Pelton and Pelton Associates for our last announcement. Yes?
And I'm going to ask John to pull up the report that was attached in the agenda that she provided, John.
The report or the presentation, Lori?
Yeah, the presentation. It's basically a PDF of what she, a memo she submitted.
Oh, I have a full-blown presentation, a PowerPoint.
Oh.
Lori, we have a PowerPoint for it, so-
I didn't realize that. Okay.
And Charlotte Pelton, you have been unmuted, but I believe you are self-muted at this moment. You are self-muted.
Am I unmuted?
Just texted.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So much. Thank you, Mayor, and city commissioners for giving us the opportunity to come today and give you a status report of what has been a very interesting time of working with the city and working also with the Boynton Beach Cultural, the Boynton Cultural Center, Inc., which is Suzanne Ross's nonprofit organization. As you know, we were, we were contracted in March of 2019 to help provide fundraising services for the public elements of the town square project that, that really gave opportunity for some philanthropic gift. These components include the, go to the next slide, I'm sorry. You'll see on, on the next slide. The components include the Schoolhouse Children's Museum, the public library, the cultural center, the, some specific public spaces within City Hall, the amphitheater, the Innovation Center, the adventure parks, and a very exciting project that Harvey Orier came on board to help us with. And that is a unique Boynton Beach history trail that will highlight elements of Boynton Beach history throughout the town square and then ultimately beyond that. As I said earlier, the purpose of our endeavor is to work with the leaders of these various entities and Suzanne and the organization in providing what I like to call icing on the cake, the funding that is above and beyond what the city can provide. The next slide, please. I will say that much of 2019 was focused on creating what is the most comprehensive set of campaign materials we've ever done because it had so many moving parts. And in fact, we continue to work on that as we're going to add the amphitheater component and also the history. We also worked, and I want to thank the mayor and commissioners and the city staff and others who identified a whole host of people. We've identified 215 or so people, of which we think there's a- We've identified two-hundred-and-fifteen or so people, of which we think there's a solid eighty to a hundred prospective donors, to, uh, potential donors to this project, and we will continue over time to identify additional ones. We have had success to date, although we did pause in, um, in, in early this year. As you know, we took a five-month hiatus because we really weren't sure what was gonna be happening with, uh, with, uh, COVID issues. But, uh, we resumed in, in August, and I will, am happy to report that to date we have received seven gifts totaling two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We have three additional verbal pledges. We have resumed socially-distanced tours, um, uh, to showcase the beautiful buildings and, uh, and really are getting this campaign back up in earnest again. As I said, we have beautiful, comprehensive materials. Each of you will be receiving a package of all those materials. I would hope that, uh, any people that you can think of as you review the materials that you think might be interested in getting behind this and supporting it, that you would identify those and provide that information to Lori or Colin or any of the other team members so that we can pursue those, you know, those relationships as well. And, uh, we will continue to do donor research as we, as we, uh, you know, get this campaign back up in earnest again. We have kicked off the internal campaign. That is, though, we are working with Mark and Kelly Heffron to reach out to the town square contractors as those people, uh, greatly benefited from the construction project and, uh, are, we are seeking gifts of, uh, from each of them to support the project as well. We've also are approaching, uh, the large vendors of the city, including your banking and financial, um, institutions, reaching out to them. And a number of them have already shown interest in getting behind and supporting this project. Next slide, please. We have recruited and will continue to recruit a strong leadership, uh, committee, including, um, Carrie Parker Hill. You know a number of these people, Harvey Oyer is very well-known, the head of the chamber, a number of people who've expressed interest. And the role of the leadership committee, it's not to have a lot of meetings, but simply to advocate for the project, be knowledgeable, introduce people to us, invite them to come and do tours. And we will continue to do that, uh, safely as we can, um, as we continue this endeavor. And that, there is a more detailed report that is included in your package. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Open up to the floor.
My, my only request would be to, I, I don't know how well this will be going as things move forward, but perhaps do quarterly check-ins, um, to just kind of report back to us where we are or if there's some type of visible kind of goal tracker that we're sharing publicly or anything like that.
Absolutely. We obviously are not making any announcement as, as to details of gifts at this point. It's up to the donors to make those decisions as to when that information is public. But absolutely, we would be happy to do that. And on a quarterly basis, we'll do a check-in and let you know how things are going. Um, and as I said, any, any ideas that you might have would be helpful. I will say this, uh, as you receive the materials, we would welcome any of you to make a gift to this campaign. We think that it would send a wonderful signal out to the general community that you, as the leaders of this, uh, of the city, are behind this, since we are asking people to provide philanthropic dollars for those items that weren't funded. So, um, as I said, we'll get those packages in the mail to you right away and would welcome your feedback.
So Charlotte, uh, you know, the aspect of it is, is what is the, the minimum gift? So that we know what we're, we're starting from.
Mayor, that's a great question. Here's what I know. I believe that people, we, we don't presume to know what people's abilities are or what their obligations are. I would suggest that I, that for each person, if you would consider a meaningful gift for yourself, what that might look like. And for each person, that could be very different. For somebody, a hundred dollars a year over five years might be a meaningful gift. For another human being, ten thousand dollars a year or a hundred thousand dollars a year might be. I would just say, you know, s- look at, at your own philanthropic giving and figure out something that ma- make meaning for you. The materials that will be provided to you include naming opportunities. As I recall, sort of the lowest-level naming opportunities are about twenty-five-hundred dollars. We are accepting multi-year pledges. So someone could give five hundred dollars a year over five years and have a naming opportunity. There will be donor recognition of all gifts on the website. But as it comes to actual naming of things and plaques and things like that, I think twenty-five-hundred is about the lowest that we will, will, oh, have.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. We are finished with announcements. We will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. For items not on the agenda, I have been informed that, uh, the Legacy Project, they are requesting that it remain on the table. And the Knuckles Boulevard, uh, land is still on the table to November fourth, so the public is free to speak on those items for three minutes. And please state your name and address for the record, uh, before you begin. So, John, yeah, allow people to raise their hands. And I think we're gonna have people from the, the podium here first.
Yeah, those options are enabled.
What are you trying to do, Tom?
This is on?
Yes, it is. So that's the camera. That's the microphone.
All right. No mess, thank you. My name's Tom Warren Key. I live at two-seven-eight-zero Worcester Road. And I wanted to make sure everybody knows, we moved to Boynton in nineteen fifty-six, our family did. And, uh, that, Boynton's a hundred years old now. So I've lived here, uh, for in the Boynton environment, environs, where sixty-five percent of the town's existence. That makes me pretty old. First, I'd like to notice, uh, the new business item, uh, that I read by, proposed by Commissioner Romulus to stop using EPS foam on city property. Please support this item. Dozens of municipalities in Florida supporting this and many more to come. I'm mainly speaking this evening to ask you to find a way to save the Nichols Forest property. Most everyone would like to know the reasoning behind the commissioners' apparent plan to sell the forest at Nichols Boulevard. It's fifteen acres, and it is a true dense forest. So there's some questions I have for the commission that can perhaps shed light on this situation. I'll ask these questions even though the comments part of the meeting is not necessarily a question in an informed format. So here are my questions. Is part of your decision-making process a consideration of what value the forest has to the city if it can be saved? Here's another question. What if a private citizen offered to match the best offer, which I believe is about three million dollars for the fifteen acres? If a private citizen offered to match the best offer and pay cash for the forest to make it a preserve, how would the city commission react to that offer? Or does the city commission have other reasoning? There may be another reason other than income for the city. But if there is another reason that has not been expressed by any commissioner that I've heard. So if an offer were to be made to purchase the property, to preserve the forest, would the city commission prefer that offer instead of an offer that would result in the construction of residences? If there, is there an incentive for the city to have additional residential units constructed? This type of transparency is a good thing and may help justify the commission's reasoning. I have spoken to the county and their response was that the forest is certainly worth keeping as a preserve or a passive park. The political will and monetary considerations are the answer to whether it will happen. Palm Beach County may be interested in purchasing the property from the city to preserve it as a forest, preserve, or pass apart. But unless the city commission instructs the city manager to look into this option, we may never know.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Okay, I don't think there's any other points I need to make here. And if you haven't been in the forest, I will conduct private tours. Being inside the forest is important, because from the outside-
Tom, Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
You have another, someone else?
Mike Wharton, nine-three-one-seven, Long Island Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, six-four-six. Do you know what the panel is on?
Yes, it is on.
Um, I'd like to, uh, we had a, a meeting on the corner of Nichols Road and Old Boynton Beach Boulevard. We got together this past Saturday, twelve o'clock and two, two. And we had about fifty participants there. And all it did was, uh, record the, the endeavors of these, and these people to make it public to the rest of the country, that, that the rest of the country, the rest of Boynton Beach passing by, that, uh, Nichols Boulevard, uh, is something worth saving. If I could play that, so you all can see it.
Yep, we see it.
Looks like them.
A little bit lower, a little bit for the back, back, back. There you go, that's good.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you very much for that. We are serious about trying to preserve Nichols Boulevard as a forest area. I appreciate your consideration and thinking our matter seriously. And, uh, I guess that's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Susan Oier, one forty southeast twenty-seventh way. Dear Commissioners, I enjoyed helping plant forty-five new trees in the Betty Thomas Park last Saturday with the Sustainability Department and the community greeting. Thank you, Mayor Grant, for helping out. But I was surprised Commissioner Romulus, who lives about ten houses away, didn't show up to help plant trees in her own park. I can say thank you to Mayor Grant. We've got a climate change compact. Thank you, Mayor Grant, for the hundred thousand dollars of landscaping on Wilbright that I've been complaining about off and on for years at Valley. This is a nice change. I can say Mayor Grant has volunteered this time to tree and global warming events recently. The rest of the commission has voted to create a sustainability department, enacted green building codes that have made us a leader in Palm Beach County and the state of Florida. The whole commission supports our go-green and, um, energy edge rebate programs. You have let, we have banned, started from the city park, should have voted for and funded three thousand trees a year to be planted in our city to mitigate, mitigate global warming. Most of our commissioners are Democrats, which support green initiatives. So I just don't understand why all of you, especially those of you with children and grandchildren, can justify raising almost a thousand trees and slaughtering countless animals to destroy this nature preserve the residents have owned and enjoyed for fifty-nine years. Please rethink this project that you have with Pulte slash Centennial. How do you move forward next month and make it an official nature preserve? Thank you.
My name is Annie Saunders.
To the microphone, into the microphone.
Where?
Into, into the microphone so they all can-
Sure.
That's all right. Yes, no, just tilt it down, there you go.
Okay. My name is Annie Saunders. I live at nine-three-sixty-five Long Island Circle. And like these other folks, I am close to the forest. I, um, understand that Mayor Grant pledged to protect the environment when he ran for this office. And I have read bios and have seen other things with the other commissioners that I see their goals being increasing revenues and making affordable housing. Okay, that's great, but it's in contrast and very detrimental to longstanding established neighborhood communities adjacent to this forest. We respect and treasure the imperiled species that live within this forest. I spoke with the Florida Wildlife Commission, both supportive managers today. Her name is Nwoka Nahata. And beyond, uh, how, well, there's only a third of these left, period, of these tortoises. And they are protected by state law. They, I am a former environmental sciences teacher. And with that, I understand the fragility of a thriving ecosystem with a keystone species, that being the tortoise. As a homeowner, very close to this preserve, I'm urging that the city of Boynton Beach respect the original county designation as a preserve and establish it as a conservation, uh, protected area. That is what Nwoka Nahata told me. If they relocate tortoises, they are moved to an established conservation area. And developers, when they come into sites like this, they have to, they are required to establish a conservation area. But this is more than a forest, it's a tree canopy, it's a buffer zone. Already, we have more negative additions to population density, traffic congestion, property taxes, leases, noise pollution. I don't want any more crowds on our canal park, walkway. My, my home backs up to the canal, looks to the forest. The Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Management Plan, you can go online to read, is very specific on its management parameters. There are commensal species as well. There is a federally protected indigo snake, for one. I see those, and they have babies. Of course, we have all of these other commensal species that like the burrows, because these tortoises live in burrows. There can be fifteen to forty feet long, six and a half feet deep. They live forty to sixty years. The females lay their eggs between May and July, only one clutch per year of any five eggs.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, public sentiment is everything, as Aiden said. You commissioners should not be doing this. We need an educational preserve conservation for the children and all of our homes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Yep.
Push warning, four-fifty Horizons East, number two oh four, Boynton Beach, Florida, three-three-four-three-five. And I read this as a member of the Boynton Coalition for Responsible Development. A group that's responsible over fifty-five hundred residents, strong active representation from the following community organizations and neighborhoods. Boynton Intercosal Group, Seagate Towers, Sterling Village, Sun Harbor Colonial Club, Los Mangos, Stanford Garden, Inca, Leisureville, Forest Parks, Sea Fest Estates, and High Point. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, the Boynton Coalition for Responsible Development respectfully submits for comment on Agenda Item Eight, Proposed Ordinance Twenty-Dash Thirty-four, Proposed Ordinance Twenty-Dash Thirty-five, and Proposed Site Plan Approval of Legacy at Boynton Beach. Our request is simple. Please do not approve on the first reading the above proposed ordinances nor the site plan. The timing of your review of the project is not acceptable. Many residents are not in town- Many residents are not in town or even aware of the project. Those who may be in town are unable to attend meetings in person due to the pandemic and are limited in their technical abilities to participate electronically. Transparency and the support of your residents are a key to successful development, which should be your goal as elected individuals. The planning and zoning board, after careful consideration, denied approval of the project. Partial closure of Southeast First Avenue is only to the benefit of the development, not that the surrounding neighborhoods should be denied. The closure will interrupt the grid system and traffic flow of the entire area. Ocean Avenue and Federal Highway, in conjunction with Southeast First, is a critical intersection for maintaining the flow of traffic in the city and the 800 residents in Stowick Village. There is no demonstrated need for 98 units per acre density. Allowing the developer to purchase additional density under the guise of complying with workforce housing requirements is a slippery slope, sets a terrible precedence, and is unsustainable for responsible growth. This coalition was formed in 2017 to educate and encourage the public involved with the Riverwalk redeveloping the Old Wind Dixie. Our concerns were ignored then. We deserve a voice in the front of our city and support responsible development. Please do not let history repeat itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That is everybody here. And so I'm going to start unmuting people from online. I'm going to start first with Luanne Moore, followed by Thomas Uscatello. Luanne, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Luanne Moore, and I live at 133 Buffett Key in Boyton Beach. Last July, I requested to see the wireless telecom facilities that the city was permitting. It was only after a facility for a small cell was constructed on Boyton Beach Boulevard and Old Boyton at Checkers that I discovered there are nine small cells currently being permitted as electrical permits for facilities to be placed in right of ways by our homes and on the streets in close proximity to us. Upon review of these permits, I found that these antennas were high-powered antennas primarily for G technology. These antennas are not only overpowered, but they are too close to the ground, and they are required to have reviews and mitigations under federal law that have not been done. We have also been to eight of these nine sites to do needs tests and found that there is totally adequate service for the service provider, and there is therefore no need for the public health and safety problems to be permitted by our homes and nearest on the street. That facility at Checkers is not in service, and it needs to be removed as an unnecessary public health and safety problem. It was never properly permitted in the right of way to begin with. However, it has become the belief that these antennas are somehow exempt from review for compliance with anything less than all applicable laws. Let me point out that the word exempt is not in Florida Statute 337.401. Neither the Florida Public Service Commission nor the Federal Communications Commission have exclusive jurisdiction over anything but the prices relating to these wireless facilities. I urge you to review our ordinances for telecommunications systems and establish home rule that ensures the facilities are safe and necessary. I have asked to meet with the city more than once to discuss this, and I hope you will find time to respond to that request. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Muscatello. You are unmuted.
Good evening. I want to thank you for this time allowing me to speak. I'd like to speak about the legacy because I am the owner of the Boyton Beach Dive Center at 212 South Federal Highway. I know that progress is important for our city, but I also want you to understand that I'm speaking for the small business owner. I was informed by our landlord that our property was sold, and so I did some investigating into places that we thought we might be able to rent. However, I found after a month's worth of investigation that there were only two places available for a small business owner to go. One was 416 East Boyton Beach Boulevard, and the other was the former CRA building on Federal Highway. However, the CRA building won $7,700 for rent, and the other building was $2,700, but it didn't fit our needs. Not only am I talking for myself, but the other small business owners on First Avenue, maybe in the plaza where Frankie's is, the paint store. If these places are developed, we need someplace to go. The small business owner will be out of business. I feel that we are part of the integral growth of Boyton Beach, and we need to have some type of place where we can afford to have our businesses continue to operate. As you continue to understand what I'm trying to say, hopefully, we can do something for the small business owner that will be able to keep us in business. Because when these big developers come in and they want to rent out the spaces that they renovated with their buildings, the prices for the rents are exorbitant that we cannot afford those. So hopefully, you folks will put it in the back of your mind that where we need to be is in Boyton Beach, and we need to be able to survive. So maybe in your future thinking, you should try to relate to the small business owner and how we can keep those folks in business without the exorbitant prices because there's just no place to go. I want to thank you again for your time, and hopefully, we all will be safe during this COVID era, and you have a wonderful night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Drew Martin. It says you're self-muted.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Drew.
Yes. My name is Drew Martin. I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club, and I'm here to speak about the item where that you have a property at Nichols. And I'm concerned that the development of this property will damage your efforts to stop climate change. I am very concerned that this property has a number of important species on it, and I would very much like you to preserve this property. I think it's important, as a city who is employing people and trying to do something about climate change, that you try to fulfill your obligations. You are saying that you care about climate change. I also think there should be respect for the trees on this property. There are numerous trees on this property which need protection. It's very important to understand that existing mature trees are the types of trees that you want to be preserving. And I think when you look at the risks that Boyton Beach has from storm damage and climate change, that this carbon sequestered on this property is extremely important. Now, as I drive around, I see you have many, many development projects. You're building a lot of housing. So I don't think that the city needs to sell this property. I think it's important for you to honor your commitment, and I particularly respect the mayor's commitment to doing something about climate change. And one of the most important things you can do is preserve this piece of land and preserve the species, the foxes, the gopher tortoises, and the other species that are on this land. So I ask you to not go forward with the sale of this property to a developer and not allow this property to be erased and the trees cut down. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Drew. And John, do you see anybody else with their hand raised or a question asked?
Mayor Grant, I do have Elizabeth Roku, who has asked a question. I'm not sure if she would like to provide comment or not, but her question is in the section that says, "Thank you." This is Elizabeth Roku from Centennial. I will leave the call if we are not part of the agenda tonight. So to be clear, the Nichols Land will not be discussed tonight.
That is correct. It would not be discussed by the city commission. It is tabled until November 4th, and that is why people are speaking about it on public audience. So that is the answer to that question. All right. And also, I received a public comment, and it says, "I'm very," by Robert Neb. It says, "640 East Ocean Avenue. I'm very much against abandonment of that street." That street, I believe, is southeast First Avenue. Tractor trailers make deliveries to the shopping center. It is also the rear entry to everybody else who is on the south side of Ocean Avenue, which often floods, and is only access to the properties on Ocean Avenue when Ocean Avenue floods out. It's on a regular basis. So I'm against the abandonment of the street. I love the project, but they must keep that street open. Thank you. And I do not see any additional comments or questions. And so we will now close public audience. And move forward to administrative. No, that was during your time with the public audience. But I'll be here afterwards if you have a question for later. Our appointment of applicants for October 20, 2020. We have two regular and one alternate position available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We have two alternate positions available on the Library Board. And one regular position, we have an applicant, Tori Orr. I'd like to nominate Tori Orr, who is eligible to be on the Parks and Recreation Board. Do I hear a second? Commissioner Hay, if you want to give me a thumbs up, but yeah, your microphone is muted. So I got a thumbs up from Commissioner Hay as a second for Tori. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
We got a thumbs up from Commissioner Hay. Hearing, anyone opposed, states so by saying nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Moving on to consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
I moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, state so by saying nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent and bids and purchases over $100,000. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, we've been requested to keep this item tabled. City managers report, at the request of Mayor Grant, Human Resources will make a brief presentation on the city's internship programs.
Barry, Director, oh, sorry. I started before I was unmuted. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Julie Olberry, Director of HR and Risk, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a brief overview of our city internship programs. John, do you have the presentation?
It is currently loaded.
Available? Wonderful. Would you advance to the next slide, please?
There you go.
Thank you. The city offers a variety of internship programs for college students, all other students, partnership programs, apprenticeship, trainee programs, and a summer program we're hoping to implement in the future. Our internship programs help us to promote the vast opportunities that are available when you seek a career in public service. Next slide, please. Students who are pursuing their undergraduate or graduate degrees may be required to complete an internship in their field of study. The city has an established program that meets the criteria and rigorous requirements for most universities, wherein the students can earn college credits upon successful completion of their internships with us. Next slide, please. We also offer a workforce experience internship. This program is open to all high school, technical, vocational, and college students who want to get some exposure to the workplace environment. This type of internship provides students with the opportunity to learn about career options within city government. They also get to perform some hands-on, meaningful work and projects while learning the importance of building their work ethic, dependability, and responsibility in a real-world work environment. Next slide, please. The city has had successful partnership programs with other agencies. For example, our Utilities Department had spearheaded a partnership with the Youth Violence Prevention Program, and later with Pathways to Prosperity: Healthier Boyton Beach, to provide summer programs for students with challenges in their home lives to help them gain workforce experience while earning a weekly stipend to help with household expenses and developing personal independence. Additionally, our IT department has had a successful partnership with South Tech Academy, where students with special needs and abilities were able to shadow employees in IT positions throughout the city, including in our police department and library. I just want to say that we're grateful to our past, present, and future partners who helped us to provide these learning opportunities to students in our community. Next slide, please. Many of our city departments have what we call apprenticeship or trainee positions, and these positions are entry-level, full-time, paid positions, which require little to no previous experience and also provide on-the-job training. These positions are posted on our city website when available, and we encourage anyone with a desire to work hard and dedicate themselves to serving the public to apply. Next slide, please. Human Resources was hoping to launch its new summer internship program for this coming summer, but due to COVID and its impact on the overall budget, we're postponing its implementation to summer 2022. This program would provide an eight-week paid internship for 15 interns who are current high school seniors or current college or vocational students. Students will be matched with the city department that most closely meets their interest. In addition to performing meaningful work within their assigned department, they will have opportunities to train with the HR department on interviewing skills, workplace etiquette, public speaking, time management, and financial sustainability. They will also create an intern vegetable garden in support of the city's sustainability initiatives. At the end of their internship experience, we will celebrate their success with a graduation ceremony. We're looking forward to being able to offer this program to continue to highlight all of the great opportunities that are available when you choose a career in local government. Next slide, please. If you or someone you know has an interest in participating in an internship program with the city, please encourage them to visit the Human Resources page on our city website, and they can complete an application there. Additionally, they can email hr@bbfl.us or call us at 561-742-6275 for personalized service. Thank you again for this opportunity to present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. I really appreciate all this information. I think it's going to, it will make a change regarding the education of our youth in the city. And so, no, I'm pleased to start this, and it's that aspect of understanding how, you know... I think is very informative, and I appreciate what you and your team do for the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
And is there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to ask Julie. Thank you. Julie, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it. Julie, you mentioned an organization that you're working with, but have you also reached out to our local schools, perhaps Boynton Beach High School?
Yeah, my team members have been working, developing those relationships. That's definitely a commitment. What, interestingly, what I heard back from them is that it was kind of hard to get a call back from the schools, because we're definitely very interested in going out, especially with Boynton Beach High School and making those connections with maybe the guidance counselors or somebody in that area, because we're always willing to go out and present to the students to let them know all the great opportunities that we have at the city. We also understand too, you know, one of my passions is, you know, realizing that college isn't necessarily the career path for everyone, and we have so many opportunities that provide for a great lifestyle to... that doesn't necessarily require a college degree. So, you know, we want to provide all of these opportunities to students and get them interested in local government. Some people just don't really even consider it for a career. And we all have a passion for what we do and a passion for our city, and we want to share that, especially with the youth in our community.
Right. Thank you, Julie. I just want to make sure that this information is available to all those kids, because part of the problem is they're just not even aware that these career routes are even possible, let alone if it's something for them. And I also know that these schools have many career academies, and perhaps there could be areas where these interests could align. And so maybe their academy fits perfectly with what we're looking for, perhaps. And so I hope those partnerships grow over time. But this is a great presentation. It's a great place to start. Thank you for your team.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Yes, I just wanted some clarification. Julie, so you said there was one that was supposed to start. It's not starting because of COVID. We're looking at '22. But what is in place now? Are there things in place now?
Everything that we... that I discussed, other than that summer program, is currently in place. And we work, you know, just individually, whenever somebody applies or reaches out to us with an interest in doing some type of internship or, you know, shadow or experience, we really do try to reach out to the departments and, you know, match them with somebody that can help to guide them along the way. So even if there, you know, isn't a dedicated program per se, we still encourage everybody to get in contact with us and just see how we can work with them.
Okay.
Sometimes we just, you know... Go ahead. Sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask, who's the point person? Who should I connect somebody with so that they can get more information?
Honestly, the best thing is to email the hr@bbfl.us, because we have several people that work on this. It's not just one person. But you can certainly refer them to me if you want to give them a direct contact name, and then I can, you know, delegate it to somebody else to reach out to them.
Sounds good. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Are you volunteering, Lori?
No, I should learn better than to put my hand up. No, I wanted to add something to the conversation before you moved on. Mayor, if that's okay.
Yes, oh, yeah.
So I just wanted, you know, one conversation we had, Mayor, a few months ago about highlighting on Facebook, you know, the different job opportunities we have, just to share with people so they realize a job in the city of Boynton Beach organization is a fantastic career opportunity. So to kick off that program, this week is Local Government Week, and Eleanor is highlighting we've had a variety of employees that will just kind of sit down and do a Facebook Live on what, or recorded, but, you know, how they ended up getting the job they have and where their interests were before they even became employed with the city. And it's so interesting to hear, you know, "I wanted to be a pediatrician, but I ended up in risk management and HR," and they tell their story and how they ended up coming to Boynton Beach and their experience with the city. So we're really excited to kick that off, and we're gonna continue to do that throughout the year and just highlight any and all positions that we can to let people know there's some great job opportunities. So thank you for your other good idea, Mayor. We've done it. We love it.
Okay, excellent. I'm very excited to start seeing that.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Hay.
Oh, I can be heard. Great. Julie, are you utilizing MyBB to get all this good news out? Because I'm really pushing that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hay, I didn't hear. Am I utilizing which program?
Uh, MyBB.
Yeah, the city app.
Oh. We do have a link on the "Join Our Team." So if people connect from our app to join our team, it will take them directly to the HR page, which has the "Apply for an Internship" link there as well. So thank you for reminding me of that new and exciting feature that we have. I'll be sure to get some more information on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next is a new business. Commissioner Romulus requested this item be placed on the agenda for the commission's consideration of a future ordinance prohibiting the use of EPS foam in city facilities.
Yes, Mayor, I'm not sure if staff has something ready. Rebecca and I discussed this. But this was a request that was made by some organizations that would request this of us. I know there was some confusion in terms of what we have done and what we haven't done, but yeah.
So what exactly is EPS foam? Yeah?
Yeah, I think Colin was gonna speak to this. I don't see Rebecca on here, unless I'm missing her. Colin, are you available to speak to this?
Yes, Colin Groff, City Manager. If the commission is interested in moving forward by consensus, we can develop an ordinance to bring back to you that would have several options on how to prohibit these kind of products on city property in parks and utilizing our contracts. What we're looking for today is just some direction from the commission if it's something they're interested in pursuing.
All right. So I'm in favor of this. EPS foam stands for Expanded Polystyrene, which is kind of what we used to see in our... when we bought a TV or something to protect it. And this is something that is gonna be a little bit difficult with procurement, because sometimes you don't know how something is boxed in. But I think it's kind of trying to understand that this type of plastic is very dangerous for the environment, and whatever we can do to help encourage or incentivize businesses to stop using that, this is something that we need to do. Because it's life into the environment is for a very long and extended time. So I'm in favor with whatever we can do to move forward, to move to a different type of material produced.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I support this 100%. This seems like a no-brainer. And I want to thank Commissioner Romulus for bringing this forward. It's a fantastic idea, and fully support it.
And Mayor, I want to make it unanimous. I also support it 110%. I think it's a great idea, and I too looking forward to... But I don't want it to negatively impact to the point that, you know, we can... Well, let's just take a look at what they bring back, and then we'll discuss it further.
Correct. Mayor?
Probably give us a meeting or two, Mayor, and we'll bring back a draft ordinance for your consideration.
Excellent.
Thank you. And I just want to remind Commissioner Hay, it seems like you were about to head down that path. You know, because we're preempted by the state, we can't make this citywide, but this is something that would simply be followed on city property. So we do dictate, you know, who we order or what vendors we work with, so we can also dictate what type of, you know, plasticware they use as well.
Very good. I didn't know that you were a mind reader also. But that's exactly where I was at.
I have two kids, so it's a gift.
Thank you.
All right. So we have consensus to move forward with that ordinance, and now we'll move on to legal. Proposed ordinance 20-036. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 9 Fire Protection and Prevention to update the city's code as is required by Florida statute when a new addition of the Florida Fire Prevention Code has been adopted, providing for repeal of laws in conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right. Is there any discussion from the City Commission? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public that has any questions regarding the updated fire safety rules? All right. You know, one of the concerns that I have is in regards to permitting, where we issue a permit and then change... What I've been told is that we missed something on our fire safety. So Laura, I want to make sure that everybody who is gets... who's attempting to get a new permit under our new safety rules understands that we have new fire safety rules. That's it for me. All right, seeing no further discussion. Having a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Commissioner Hay.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Commissioner Hay.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Consul?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz, absent. Vote is 4-0.
Thank you. We have a proposed resolution number 20-117. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right. And... Is there any discussion or questions before we move forward? A vote? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance 20-037.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 3 Zoning, Article 3 Zoning Districts and Overlays, Section 8E Downtown Transit-Oriented Development District Overlay to Add a Density Provision in Support of Workforce Housing in MU2, MU3, MU4, and MUC zoning districts, Providing for Conflict Severability Codification and an Effective Date.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to see the presentation that almost was there?
Sorry, guys. Little too quick on the draw.
Not hearing anything. Is there any discussions in regards to this ordinance? Open it up to the public?
Susan O'Leary, 140 Southeast, 27th Way. Should at least show the public this presentation so they're aware that you want to stack even more people and even more units into these tall buildings and not provide parking for them. My understanding is, because in reading through this, I didn't see any mention of parking, so I reached out to the Department, and they indicated that it was going to be at the low end of the parking, and it says something in here about it may, I quote, "may" provide appropriate rental prices, I think something along that line. And that's nice to put all this in, but how are you enforcing low rents, workforce housing rents, if you're not making it part of this ordinance? So you're just rowing extra density and throwing extra people in. You're not providing parking, and you're not forcing these developers to give workforce housing prices. I mean, are you... It's like these 750 square feet units will... should be in, I would assume, you know, if you're looking workforce housing, you're looking in the, what, $500 to $700 a month rent range? But yet you're just saying it may solve the problem? So how are you forcing them to solve this problem? You're just packing in more people, and they're just gonna charge $1,000 bucks a month for these, charge more for all the rest, and you don't have parking, and you still don't have workforce housing. So I think you either need to deal with... make it mandatory price max and do something about the parking, because you're saying that you want single people, you want couples, you want small families. Well, if you have a single person there having one car, if you have a couple in there, you're definitely having two cars. If you're having a small family depending on the age, you're having two to three cars. And you haven't parked any of this. And this is a problem we have over and over and over and over and over for... As long as I've been coming to this issue, you do not park what you build. So please address the parking issue, because there's no way a 1.0 to 1.33 parking space for this type of unit is gonna be adequate in any way, shape, or form. I think it's a great idea to provide workforce housing like this, to do these small micro units. You're... They're not gonna charge you the lower rent. They're still gonna charge $800, $900, $1,000. That's not workforce housing. The average person makes $35,000. They cannot afford $1,000 a month. So how is this workforce? It's just a smaller version. It's a pied-à-terre for somebody that who wants, you know, a winter home in Boynton, which was not purpose of this, but that's what's gonna end up happening. So I think you need to spend some time going back and looking at it and, you know, making it actually do what it is you want it to do by dealing with the... having a rent cap and increasing the parking on it. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And so at the request, may we have the presentation, please? And Lori?
Yeah, I'm here if you guys would like me to do it. I didn't know if Colin wanted to cover it, but I'm happy to do it also.
All right, can you please state your name for the record?
Sure. This is Amanda Radigan. I'm the principal planner for the city's development department. If you could please go to the next slide, John. So in front of you today, we have a code amendment which changes the way density is calculated in the downtown TOD only. This amendment would allow any units that are smaller than 750 square feet to be counted as one-half of a unit. These provisions only apply to units which are one bedrooms or efficiencies. And not only do they have to be within the TOD, they are also limited to our MU2, 3, 4, and Core districts, which equates to our highest level of land uses, which it would be our mixed-use land use, our mixed-use medium, and our mixed-use high land uses. There is some precedence for this. Broward County has similar standards. So does Martin County and Sarasota all have very similar standards. And the idea behind these code amendments is that we would be increasing overall supply of housing. Again, this is within the transit oriented district. Um, and it's also trying to naturally motivate more affordable units in a building. So the idea is that we have more of the smaller units compared to the larger units. We would be creating a bigger percentage of affordability, um, but they are not capped by any strict workforce housing income. Um, this would encourage some higher population density and it does support implementation as your, the implementation of the CRA plan. The next slide, please. So there are two kind of caps to density when we look at it this way. When you're counting half units, um, you would be limited to your underlying zoning district cap. So if you are in a, um, a zoning district that allows 80 units, when you're counting your half units, you're still capped at 80 units. Now, when you count each unit one for one, you are then capped by your land use cap. So no matter what, um, you would never go above the designated density stated in our comprehensive plan. Uh, next slide. So this is a map of the area. In case you are unfamiliar, for the public's knowledge, that black circle represents the TOD and any of the pink or purple parcels, um, this would be applicable to. I have, I'm available for any questions and I know Colin is also on the line if you guys have any specific questions. I'd also like to say that this is one in a series of things that staff is working on. The next item that you should be before you shortly will be accessory dwelling units. And that would be applicable to some of our single family residences. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. So my first question is regarding the, the parking. It was not in the, the presentation. Does a half unit need a half a spot?
No, so actually parking is unchanged. So if you are providing an efficiency or one bedroom, you are parking those units the same you would any other one bedroom or efficiency.
Okay. And so one of the ways that, you know, I spoke about this is that, let's say you have four units of 500 square feet and then you have a three two of 2,000 square feet. This allows for that density at the same size location. And that way the developer is incentivized to have these cheaper units than more of the bigger units. And this is something that is more meant for, uh, not necessarily the millennials, but the Gen Z's and for the, the future generations to, for their ownership. Uh, it's, you know, for me, it's, it's kind of like, you know, I was, you know, started a family and so this is not necessarily the 500 square feet someplace that I'd like to live, but maybe 15 years ago, that's a different story. And so that's something that we're trying to build our city for the future. It is going to be a different city in the future than it was 15, you know, 15 years ago, 2005, I wasn't here, but I'm guessing it was very different before Marina Village and Casa Costa. And the, the issue is, is that they're here and it's kind of that we need to, you know, build that downtown. We have, the amphitheater has its grass and so we're looking to have concerts there. Our historic high school civic center is built. We're going to have lots of different plays going in there and so we need to have people. And one of the main concerns that I have is the, the economic development, that we just don't want to have residences here. We need to have jobs as well. And so that's something that hopefully we can address soon in regards to how do we help with the, the parking for the mixed use so that the office spaces that can use some of the residential parking spaces and there could be an overlap to, to get the density for people coming and going into the city. So, uh, appreciate the, the work that you have done and I think this is going to be beneficial for, um, housing because of the economic principles of supply and demand. The more supply you have, uh, if demand does not, does not meet it, price goes down. And so those are my comments. I'll open up the, the floor to anyone else from the commission. All right. Hearing none, we have a motion and, oh, Commissioner Romulus, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said something you didn't hear me. No, I was just going to confirm with staff that, you know, this is just that one in some of the changes that we're making to the LDRs and to the workforce housing ordinance, we are going to be having that, um, workshop coming up in November, correct?
Yes, so that is still, um, I'm, I'm sorry Lori, if you had any comments, but Tim Minolta is still on the books. The accessory dwelling units is the next thing that we're pushing through, but we still have that workshop, um, with everyone to go through any other changes or ideas and proposals at that time, too.
Right. Mayor, that is scheduled for November 12th and we're going to do 5:00 PM. I sent an email out to you, um, 4:00 PM, the mayor's traveling, it's going to be a little too tight for him. So if five o'clock works for everybody, we'll do five o'clock Thursday, November 12th. And we'll advertise it accordingly. It will be a go-to webinar format.
All right. Is there any other comments from the commission? Just hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conserga?
Yes.
Commissioner Haye?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz absent, the vote is four oh.
All right. Thank you so much and we will discuss the letter of intent from Mallorca Isles LLC at our next meeting. And that moves us to future agenda items. And one of the things that I'd like to speak with the, the commission is, is that at our Monday meeting with the city manager, Colin informed me of previous attempts to annex the area in between Nichols and Javert. And I think that is something that we as a commission need to get a better understanding because one of the things is, is that this property is not within the city of Boynton Beach and currently there's no annexation plans to get it into the city of Boynton Beach. However, if we do plan on, uh, getting that area into the city of Boynton Beach, it would make sense to preserve it. And so that is something that I'd like information on, uh, the previous attempt of annexation, having a conversation with the commission. Because with this, uh, property annexed in, I believe that we can annex more properties in. And this is, you know, the, the question was is that is this a financial reason why we're selling this? And yes, it, it is a financial reason why we're selling this. However, if we are able to negotiate and get additional revenue for the city and it be in perpetuity, I feel that that is a much better deal than a one-time sale of the property. So I'm requesting consensus, uh, to hear at our, hopefully our next meeting on November 4th before the Mallorca, the previous annexation attempt and what would mean if we do annex or could annex, I guess.
Um, just, just to clarify, um, isn't it that we are unable to annex properties that are not contiguous to the city limits?
Correct. And so, uh, Colin has mentioned that there was a previous attempt and that it failed very, very closely. And so maybe it is worth to take another opportunity to annex the properties in between Javert and Nichols. And that way it would make sense to bring that property in and preserve it as a nature preserve because I did go in it and they are correct. Nobody has done anything for 60 plus years to that property and it is something that we're, we can't, we can't ever get again. We can't build history.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I don't, not, I hear you, Mayor. I'm simply just asking for clarification because what, what is it that we're going to be embarking on if you're talking about trying to annex the property? Are we going to be trying to annex other properties, the, either east of it so that then we can annex that? I, I don't understand what's being asked you.
So, okay, do, uh, so Nichols is a north-south road and Javert is a north-south road. And in between that is, uh, unincorporated, that we would like, uh, that a previous attempt of annexation and bringing it into our water district, uh, attempted and it did not happen. However, I do not have any of the details in regards to that and I'd like the details of that, uh, of those properties coming into our water district.
Or can, can I hear something from staff, please?
So we worked with, with the county probably a year and a half ago to annex the property that, from the mall, basically to that Nichols property, uh, all the residential community. They're on sewer and septic, if I'm not mistaken. An initial round of communications by the county to the residents, the residents were in favor, uh, more than 50%, I think it takes 51% were in favor to be annexed. Then when, I think the final communication from the county and this, you're going to get more details than me coming out of here right now, uh, on the, on the 4th. But, um, the, the votes were very close for, you know, 49% to 51% against or some, whatever, something to that effect that would, it, it ended up stalling or, or, um, stopping the annexation discussion to continue. By annexing that property commissioner, then that would then make the park land and that property contiguous, that the city could potentially annex in and, and preserve or do what you, you care to do in the future. But I, Mayor, that's where you're referring to what we chatted about the other day. So we can bring the details of that, of, of how we worked with the county and what we did and exactly what requirements would, what needs to happen to be able to annex.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That's what I was looking for. I just wanted to mention that there was something that was a read right, right, coming up the wrong tree here. Okay, I'm fine with that, but, um, information being brought back to us.
And I'd be in favor.
All right, yes, and Vice Mayor?
Uh, I will, so your request is for more information and I support that. And I, I just want to say now, and I know we'll come back and talk about this again, but if the direction we're going is for the city to absorb, uh, the surrounding areas to annex it, you know, one of my concerns is right now, we really are not, in my opinion, we're not making enough investments into our current parks and into our current preserves. And so one of my worries, and we'll, we can discuss it further in another meeting, is that if we continue in this route, you know, are we going to actually maintain it? Are we actually going to take care of it? Because there's plenty of parks within our city limits that I feel are not getting enough investments and I believe they deserve it. So if we're going to go down this route, I just want to make sure that part of our conversation is that if we take in more, that we can actually take care of it and make the right investments. But that's just my concern.
Yeah, and I look forward to hearing what is parks specifically, uh, that you're talking about.
Oh, sure, of course. But I, I've mentioned it already, you know, I've mentioned the preserves, um, and some other places as well, but, um, we'll circle back to it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for, uh, getting that information. Uh, next meeting, does the commission have any other items before we adjourn?
Mayor, just remind everybody, November 4th is not our regular date to meet because of the election that, so we will be, this November 4 meeting is falling on a Wednesday in case people, just to make sure they know.
Yes. All right, so November 4th, Wednesday is our next meeting. Daylight Savings is happening on November 1st, so please put your clocks back one hour on Halloween, you know, you can do it before two o'clock, that means you get an extra hour of Halloween. And, uh, I look forward to seeing all of the trick-or-treaters for, for those who are trick-or-treating.
Is the city doing anything special?
Make sure that we all go out and vote if we haven't already.
Absolutely. And yes, Commissioner Romulus?
No, I just was asking if the city, Eleanor or anybody was doing anything special and Lori shook her head no, so I guess not.
I don't believe so.
All right.
Not any type of event.
Okay, and if there's any sort of business or organization that is doing an event, can we help, uh, you know, we would be willing to promote that within the city. So.
We'd be happy to share.
Yeah. All right. Seeing nothing else, John? I got a motion to adjourn. John, you mind providing us with the closing?
Yes, sir. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
All right. Motion to, uh, we got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Means adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Aye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.